Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 16th, 2022 hybrid meeting of public hearing, I mean, yeah, public hearing and work session for the Southampton Village Planning Board. So can I have a motion that we open the meeting?
We open the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McFarlane. Everybody?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the public hearing for Elegant Affairs at 230 Elm Street. And before we open the public hearing, I just want to review a little bit about this application because there's been some confusion over the months about it.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that first I'll state that I received the affidavits of notice and posting and they're in order. Perhaps we can have a motion to open the public hearing and then you can make your initial comments.
Okay. I'd like to move that we open the public hearing for Elegant Affairs 230 Elm Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Okay, now let me make my my little speech here. So I just want to explain to the audience here in the room and anybody who might be in on listening to in Zoom that this is a site plan application for the relocation of a handicap ramp. We've received a lot of input from the neighbors and understand their concerns. That's why we're here to listen tonight. And this, it's not a site plan application. It's it's not for a change of use by any means. It's solely to discuss and approve the handicap ramp relocation. The planning board is strictly evaluating exterior modifications to the ramp, nothing else. The catering use at this site is pursuant to a certificate of occupancy and not under review tonight. Just want to make that really clear. And, you know, I have to be honest, this is my first public hearing with people in the room since becoming chair in in COVID, so I'm not sure what the procedure is. Do we just open it up to the public at this point?
Well, I might suggest that either you ask the applicant to make a statement if he likes or and then open it up to the public?
Okay. Mr. Gilmore, can I, you have something to say?
Of course.
Okay.
For the applicant David Gilmore Jr., Greenberg, Troy, 2317 Montauk Highway from Hampton. And again, you've heard this before, but for the sake of the public, Elegant Affairs is a tenant of a property that hasn't operated for one day at this site. Any complaints about prior operations do not apply to them. The chairman is correct. This issue is really about ADA compliance and our ability to do it correctly under the terms of a lawsuit that was filed and settled.
Can you repeat that, please? I just, I would like the public to understand that this organization has been sued by a person at large in the public for not having adequate ADA access to the building.
That's correct. Yeah, it was a lawsuit. It didn't involve my client, involved the landlord. But I've provided a copy of the settlement to the board to understand it. Today I received from your staff, a letter that made some complaints about the survey and the site plan. I called our architect and the architect had not scaled the outside. So I asked him to do that. I have new plans for you so that now the site plans are consistent with the survey that was. And I gave a copy to, can I approach?
Yes, please.
I gave a copy to building departments. So just to clarify, this was basically a coverage calculation with in brick and asphalt, correct? Yes. And what, you know, again, I said this before to the board. So the the prior plan is here on the blacktop outside. Here's where you have the access, the handicap access. In this area here, we just said existing blacktop to remain. That area was not scaled out by the architect. He just put that in to did not match the survey. The prior plans, the new plans you have, this area meets exactly what is shown on the survey. So that's updated. David, excuse me for one second. Kat, is there a way to get this on the screen?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can also share my screen if you'd like to see electronically.
Okay, I just think it would be helpful for the audience to see.
I apologize because the seven is old and I keep showing young.
All right.
Alex, can you share?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll be able to put this up on the screen and I'm happy to navigate where you need.
Yes. Now, how do I point to it? Do I do it here?
Actually, I want to come right here. You can use my mouth.
With this area right here, those existing blacktops are going to remain at the site and it will be used to support the handicap access. There was also some question on the front here. Some deviation in prior plan in a survey on the brick walkway or access to the building. So I believe now that the survey and the plan are entirely consistent. So we have those changes. I do have a letter in support from a neighbor. I understand that some of the people from Paulus Hall here and I appreciate the chairman's admonition on keeping this to the access. And that's it. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer. And I will let the public. Do the board members have any questions for?
Yeah, I just wanted to revisit the idea of why the old ramp where it was couldn't be reconfigured to comply with ADA access. And so that's part one of the question. Why couldn't the interior be reworked so the ramp could stay? Why are we moving the ramp? I've never fully understood that. So what, that's one question. And the other question is, what else will you have to do down the road to comply with ADA in terms of, you know, a walkway to the parking lot or to the street? Because my, from reading ADA requirements, I'm wondering if this area will later on have to be expanded in terms of what the existing blacktop to comply further with what you're saying was in the in the settlement with the plaintiff. So if, you know, with the settlement with the plaintiff, couldn't you have moved the ADA ramp to various locations that this board could consider? If we wanted to have the least impact from moving the ramp while providing ADA access? Those are the issues that I just would like to understand.
Okay, so the first issue is, why is it located there?
Yeah, why couldn't it be repaired or fixed or the interior changed so that it could have stayed where it was with the least impact?
That's a good question. The the current access brings handicap people into a kitchen. And that's what violates ADA. That's the crux of the lawsuit. There are other issues, interior, that are unrelated, but it's all part of one settlement. So where it's located currently brings you into the kitchen. ADA says you have to provide the same experience for capable people as opposed to handicap people. So this plan utilizes the old area and just brings it along the north side of the building into an access that brings you into the main room, exactly like how you would access it.
So there was no opportunity to modify the kitchen area so you'd have an entrance that led to the hallway? We couldn't do the interior to change that to comply?
Not the way that the kitchen set up.
Okay, that was, yeah, that was part one. And then the other question is, looking down the road, if this were to be approved, what would that mean for the entire area? You know, if you know that, or if you can give us some ideas of what might have to be modified down the road?
Well, it was a, it was a full lawsuit that was settled. So we believe that all of the issues contained in that lawsuit are satisfied by this plan. I don't know if you've been to the front of the building, but it is sort of a, you know, hodgepodge of brick walkways. The the village has a sidewalk there. It's it's challenging. So the access from the rear is really the best way, most efficient way to provide access to the building. Some days in the winter. I don't, I don't know what's going to change in the future or, you know, but but from my client's perspective, this is, this is the plan. It satisfies requirements in the lawsuit. That's what we're going to do.
So you have to have a bigger entrance on the side or the wheelchair entrance at this ramp, right? You have to expand the side entrance to the.
There is an existing side entrance that that's being accessed, but it opens up into the main room, which is what satisfies ADA. I have one question also. How would someone in a wheelchair get to the ramp at this point? Just can you actually drive back to that corner of the property and drop off? So I think we're ready to. Um. And I'll leave the plans. Yeah, why don't we? I just be, I, we can, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes. I think that's enough time to get a message across on this size application. Just because, Kat, are there people waiting in the room?
Chair, I do have a Val Davis. Kat, I just need to be promoted to host so that I can access that. Would you want me to go ahead and let that person in, Chair?
Yeah, why don't we start with people on Zoom and then we'll move people in the room?
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, Kat.
You're welcome.
Okay, if you could just unmute yourself and put your camera on, that would be great.
Hello, board members. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. My name is Val Davis. I am a resident homeowner of.
Anthony, I need to tell him he's muted.
I can hear him. Can you not hear him? He, I don't have him muted, Kat, and I could hear everything he was saying. Alex, could you hear?
I could, yes.
And Chair, could you hear him or no?
Sir?
Okay. Want to try it again, Mr. Davis?
Certainly.
The room may have a little trouble hearing us.
It's good, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you. My name is Val Davis. I'm a resident homeowner on Pulaski Avenue. And just a couple of things I wanted to put into the record, please. One, I find it unacceptable that Gilmore waltzes in at the last minute fixing their errors, not allowing the public submitting this to the building department so that we could get a copy of it and compare it to what is going on. We deserve that. It is, it is, it is, it is egregious that they would kind of sneak this in and we don't get a chance to look at it and compare it and talk about it and figure out what's really going on. That's number one. Number two, since this is not a full site plan review, I need to find out from the board, please, that a CO will not be issued based upon just this ADA ramp since a full site plan review of this horrible property has not been conducted. Thank you very much.
Not just one quick response is, if anybody did any waltzing, it was the person that wrote the letter and submitted it at the two o'clock today that I just received. And we were nimble enough to go and get the plans redone just in time for this. So there was no waltz, there was no ill intent. I'm not sure if the speaker understands his facts, but it's not what happened.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest that you hear from the public and maybe ask Mr. Gilmore, Mr. Gilmore, if you'd like to.
Okay.
That's exactly what happened. We were not allowed to see this prior to anything happening. You snuck it in at the last minute, regardless of how. It's unacceptable. We, the public, as residents of the neighborhood, deserve a chance to review these documents so that we are prepared to to come to the board and and talk intelligently and and accurately about what our concerns are with regard to this ADA ramp.
Okay, as I understand it, that the the issue was brought up by a member of the public and the applicant that that there was just a discrepancy between site, between this drawing and the survey, and they fixed it for tonight so that it could be discussed.
We we deserve a chance to see it. We can see what the differences are. I I can barely understand. You put a map up there, but I, there was no pointer. There was nothing there for me to be able to see what's going on. You're talking about the back of the building, the side of the building. I see grass in front of what I think is the ADA ramp. I, a wheelchair can't go on grass.
There's not grass in front of the ramp. Maybe you need to figure out how to read a plan because there's no grass in front of the ramp. The ramp is in the, in the northeast corner of the property. And there's no grass back there. It's, it says existing blacktop. And if there's anything.
We deserve a chance to see the accurate plans so that we can review them and and have accurate public testimony. That's the point, period. So now I need to find out from the board that there will not be a CO issued based solely on this ADA ramp when a full site plan review has not been conducted.
We're not doing anything having to do with a CLO.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, the the building department issued certificates of occupancy. Thank you for your comments.
Okay. Next. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Anton Borovina. I represent several neighbors who reside on Pulaski and Elm Street who are opposed to action taken by this board and the village in furtherance of what is really and essentially an illegal use. I am mindful, Mr. Chairman, that we are here to discuss the ramp. I understand that in the application before you is in connection with the exterior modification to move the ramp. But under our, I file, on behalf of the neighbors, an appeal to this Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm raising actually a technical issue, but nevertheless, one that is of importance under the statute. The statute provides that when there is an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, automatic stays any further action taken until then, until the application by the Board of Zoning Appeals is resolved. And in this case, the appeal is essentially two fronts. The first is an appeal, which is not, appeal of the building permit that was issued many, 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 many months ago. We were, we, we did not bring a, an appeal to the ZBA then because under the village code that is then existed, all building permits, rather interesting, it was, it was just after it was one that only when I'm aware, required review by the planning board before the building permit becomes final. That local law was rescinded just recently. And as a result, we're now pursuing that. But the second component of our appeal is an interpretation. It is our view that the planning board, even with respect to something as mundane as a moving ramp, if it's done in furtherance of or in connection with a publicly stated use, and that is a catering. And I will, I will not bore you with the details of this. By that, I mean to say, I will not be arguing that we could be, the prior existing nonconforming use. The, that is really for the Board of Zoning Appeals to decide one way or the other. And when they decide one way or the other, then the, this board would be able and with the admonition of the Board of Zoning Appeals to review the application for a movement of a ramp that's for illegal use. We're not asking you to, by the way, to, 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 to substitute your view for what the illegal use is because that's, that's, that issue is before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's, that's why in my prior correspondence to the board, I requested that this matter be stayed temporarily until the Board of Zoning Appeals resolves the issue. I also do agree, I have not seen the the revised plans. I understand Mr. Gilmore's representation. I respect that, that then, that there are certain things were, were done in the plan in conformance with the survey. That that may very well be the case, but I believe that my clients would like the opportunity to look at that. Primarily, I apologize.
No, that was, that was the.
Was that me?
It was the timer.
You say one thing. I'm here for, I'm here for the technical issue that by operation of law of the tendency of the appeal before the Board of Zoning Appeals stays active. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for the comments.
Excuse me. Name for the, for the record, I didn't get his name.
It's Anton Borovina.
Okay, thank you.
So since he's requesting a legal interpretation, I will tell the board that this board action is not stayed upon appeal. The purpose of this stand is to protect an applicant seeking an interpretation or an appeal on their own property from enforcement. And since this is an appeal by a third party, this board.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else?
Yes, I have one more in on Zoom. I, Guarini, would you like me to let that person in?
Sure.
Okay, if you could just unmute yourself and turn your camera on, that would be great, please.
Hello, everyone. Please let me know if you can hear me.
We can hear you fine.
My name is Anne Ray Gornieri. Like Mr. Davis, I am also a resident of the neighborhood, a longtime owner and a renter for a very long time. And I know this is not.
Can you, can you just tell us where you live and how long you lived there?
Yes, I live on Pelletro Street and I've been there close to a decade. And then for several years prior, I've been a renter in the same neighborhood. And I'm very familiar with 230 Elm and all of its permutations and challenges. And I am here to agree in part with Mr. Davis and also Mr. Borovina. I feel like when you guys showed these plans right now, like the plant, I, I don't pretend, sir, to be as good at you as reading plans, at reading plans, but I have no sense for like where this actual ramp is going to reside. And this plan doesn't seem to look anything like the plans that we saw when we were meeting on this issue over Zoom. What was this, like a year ago? And I just feel like there's been so little transparency about what is happening on this property. And I would just like to understand when we'll have a better sense for what the actual final plans are. If they're indicating that they're building a ramp, that indicates to me that there are plans in process to actually build this property out further. And I'm just not sure on when we're going to hear about what that is. And I thank you for your time and also look forward to your answer. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments.
Sorry?
She's the owner of Elegant Affairs. She'd like to speak.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I think we should continue the public comments first.
Oh, yeah. Definitely public comments first. Is there anybody else?
Nobody on Zoom has their hand up.
Okay.
Two guys on the left.
Jay Fitzpatrick, 243 Elm Street. I'll be brief, I'll be bold, and I'll be gone. I'd like to let the applicant's counsel tell you why we're here. The neighborhood, the neighbors are going to come here and complain about a whole bunch of stuff that you have no control over. Only I can define my application. The only thing under consideration by this board is ADA access. And hearing from the neighbors is pointless. That's why we're here.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
The issues are not pointless. The board told us that they had read and considered all our correspondence and then we would have a chance to speak. We hope by tonight we would have had a site plan review or at least a dialogue to see if there was some common grounds for a compromise. But council's artfully crafted application prevented that process by taking every site plan objective off the table except ADA access. Traffic, parking, landscape, screening, drainage, septic sewage, sound, they're still going to happen when this opens. But just removing it from the paper, it's, it's still going to occur. It's going to be a problem. Counsel may be entitled to define his own application, but he's not entitled to define reality. When the doors open, food, liquor, and beer trucks will start delivering off of Pulaski Street. Some of the guests will traverse the new ADA ramp, but hundreds more will still find places to park because there's no adequate onsite parking. There's valet attendants that are going to be rushing all around, stealing all the places for the residents to park. There'll be no place for the, the people to have guests. The sound systems will still permeate the neighborhood. Cigarette smoke and pot smokers will still congregate out front because there's no screening. Garbage trucks will still barrel down Elm Street, Pulaski Street in the morning to pick up trash. Why are these issues so pointless? Or why are these issues pointless, not pointless? Because we lived through some bad behavior of the Jew Lee Club. I don't know if you remember that, how bad that was. And because the police club unapologetically allowed bad behavior from its previous tenant for 10 years, a caterer that turned Southampton Beach into the South Jersey Shore. Now they're telling us they're going to bring another caterer in that's upscale. And that solves everything. Upscale is better than blue collar, I guess. There's no problem anymore. We hope that we trusted the planning board, would do its job, but unfortunately it took, it looked like that's not going to happen. Not here, not tonight, not now. Stephen M. Jones, the former director of the Suffolk County Planning Department, on the June 10th, 2022 applicant memorandum to this board states his professional opinion that approved, the approval of Elegant Affairs application endangers the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the village residents. That was a memorandum that was submitted to you. Did anybody read this? Okay.
Yes.
If it's your number one objective, site plan review, to consider what endangers.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
The residents prescribe.
Excuse me, Mr. Fitzpatrick. You have 10 more seconds, okay?
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll skip to the real thing. One last thing. ADA access is an important objective for whoever ends up at 230 Elm. But according to the applicant's current drawings, A104 and the Department of Justice 210 ADA standard for accessible design, your ADA compliant ramp as drawn is not AK, ADA compliant. Thank you.
Wait, can I ask one more question before you leave the podium? Where do you live? How long have you lived there?
243 Elm Street. And I've been out here since the 80s.
240 what?
243 Elm.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Charles Dobrovoski. I live across the street from 230 Elm. I've been here all my life, 69 years. So I, I know that area. I know the building. I used to be a member there. And I'm a current shareholder right now. And the ramp that he's talking about, I used that ramp once. But it did never entered the kitchen. It entered the great room number two. Unless they made that kitchen bigger, it didn't go through the kitchen. That's for sure. There's another door that goes through the kitchen, but it. but it's not a handicap ramp. I'm not against a handicap ramp. I disagree with the location of the new ramp. Elegant Affairs was denied building of a desk, a deck outside where the new ramp is planned. And this ramp is the solution to having an outdoor space for partygoers. The current ramp is located at the back of the building where the guests would enter at the end of the dining hall. The new ramp, they are entering in, it would pass the DJ platform and onto the dance floor. It doesn't make sense unless they're planning to use the ramp for more as a hangout than an entrance. People live around that building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Michael Zinder, 36 Pulaski Street. Lived there for half a dozen years and was a renter in the community for many years before that. I appreciate being here today and frankly, having served on boards of this nature in the past, I appreciate what you guys do. It's a thankless job, it's a lot of work, and you're trying to do your best to look out for the public. I appreciate that. I think, though, in this particular case, you guys are being incrementalized to death. I think some of you may know the history here, but this applicant was before the Architectural Review Board, before you guys. I sat in on those hearings. They had vastly different plans. They wanted to have these terraces outside. They wanted to have weddings outside. There are all kinds of things on their agenda. And when they found out that the Architectural Review Board was cool to these ideas, they suddenly said, we're going to just not do anything on the outside of the building. We'll take it to the planning board, we'll make it just a ramp review, and we'll push it through them and then incrementalize you guys so that after that, we'll come back. But it's already in operation, we're already making money, it's already there, and then we're going to make changes. Mr. Gil Martin already admitted in one of your prior meetings that they're planning to do changes to the roof and other external changes. You know why they're not here with you before those, for those changes today? Because they need your approval for that stuff, and they don't want to go there. They want to make this about a ramp, about a handicap ramp, which everybody would sit there and say, oh, my God, we've got to make it ADA compliant. You guys are being played. It's very unfortunate. This is a much bigger operation. And I know the owner of Elegant Affairs will sit here and tell you she wants to be a good neighbor. You guys who have followed this, and if those of you who have read the submissions know, they have done nothing to indicate that they would be a good neighbor. They've had to redo this application how many times because of misstatements, misrepresentations, and errors? And what makes you think after they're in there, they're going to be compliant with the requirements of this village? I'm sorry to say, this is something that's being, the wool is being pulled over you guys. You guys should use this opportunity to think long and hard about this, do the right thing, protect the public. This is not what it appears to be.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Susan Hoptisvin. I live on 95 Post Crossing, and I've been there for, since 1997. And I'm really just going to ask some questions, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be smart. I have been a Realtor for 20 years, and I will say that we are experiencing a time where mistakes have been made in the past, and they're expected to be corrected. So when I look into this specific property and I see things like the Board of Health doesn't have one piece of information on this property. I have a letter stating that. They did a very, very thorough search, and there isn't any information when something goes from a small fraternal club to a catering hall, to a convention hall, to a licensed bar, and never does a Board of Health get approved, I mean, I'm sorry, involved. So I just ask, we see this on the residential side. You can't add a bedroom, you can't make a pool house into a cottage, or you've got to change it. And those rules are being held to residents, and I think that they need to be held to commercial buildings as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else here? Is there somebody representing the Polish Hall by any chance? Is anyone here representing the Polish Hall?
My name is Mark Anteletti. I am the homeowner of a house on Pulaski Street. Four, my grandparents and four of my uncles all owned houses on Pulaski Street. I've been on Pulaski Street for 62 years as either a visitor. My great-grandparents built the church. They helped build the Polish Hall. And for 60 years, I was very, very fortunate to spend my entire life going to christenings, weddings, fundraisers, tons of events at the Polish Hall. I understand their concerns. I was not on this board, and the people that I serve with right now, we are a new board. And we will recognize that there were some missteps here moving to this point. But I think what we're talking about tonight is an ADA ramp. And what I hear is an agenda to push this place into the scrap heap. Those are two different things. It's a simple ramp on the side of the building, on the back of the building, that gets people who are ADA, who need ADA compliance to get into the building. That's it. I don't know what all the semantics else we're talking about here. It's the backside of the building that gets people legally and safely into the building. You don't party on a ramp, you don't hang out on a ramp, you get people into the building. We're willing to work with the community, we're willing to work with the neighborhood. We want to make it nice. I will buy it every single day. I'm embarrassed by how it looks. But it looks like that because a legal submitted building permit was issued and then pulled. You don't understand how that works in today's world. You get something legally, and then it gets pulled. And then there's all this going on. I have a lot to say, I'm not going to say it tonight, but we are determined to see a historic, and from my perspective, a heritage-rich building that has seen so much in our community. We talk about saving this, and I know they're going to say it's a catering hall, and I understand what they're talking about. But that building represents 80 years of history to a good part of this community. You better think long and hard about taking a sledgehammer to that. Thank you very much.
Before you go, Mr. Anteletti, are you able to opine on Mr. Dubrowski's comments that the ramp entered through great room number two rather than the service area?
I was a little confused by his comments. The ramp has always gone through the kitchen. There's some storage areas in there that maybe got rearranged or whatever, but the ADA compliant ramp never went into the public space, and that was the issue. They did not want people going through the kitchen.
Did the board just seek clarification? Do you still live on Pulaski Street?
I do not.
So this would affect you all? To put that clarification.
No, I own a home. I own a home on Pulaski.
Can you, excuse me, we're directing our comments to the board. That's the purpose of this meeting, thank you.
My cousin lives there, and I.
It's okay, we'd prefer if you just addressed your comments to the board.
Well, then I'll address this final comment to you. Nobody cares. I understand they live there, and they think I don't care. I have spent my entire life on Pulaski Street. Pulaski Street, to me, carries a lot of history to me. So I understand their concerns, we're looking to make it work. Like I said, it's a new board, we're trying to figure this out. But there's an agenda here, and I think it should be clear and it should be concise what your intentions are. Thank you.
Sir, if you want to speak again, you're going to have to approach the podium and. I'm sorry? Would you like to speak again?
You can come back up, just please come back up and reintroduce yourself.
Sure. Just, it's Michael Zinder, 36 Pulaski Street. I'm just simply going to say that to accept there's any suggestion that the community would like to see a bull dive sort of put to that building, I think that's completely unfair, I don't know where you're getting that from. There are a lot of other uses, you know? We're not against the Polish Club making use of that facility that they own. It could be a million things, it could be a bank, and the community would applaud it. It's the particular use you guys have done here and the particular expansion of that facility, which maybe had half a dozen events in years past for weddings and whatnot. You realize before the Architectural Review Board, the contractor made a statement on the record that if he could, he would utilize that facility for weddings 365 days a year. That's on the record, 365 days a year if they could book it. That is not what the Polish Club was about, sorry.
My name is John Bennett. I don't, I'm sorry, Rooney, I just feel compelled. This is a clear schism between people with a short knowledge of what's going on in this community and people who've been here for a long time. I'm 65 years old. I've been at innumerable weddings and events at that facility. It doesn't matter who owns it, zoning runs not with the operator, but it regulates use, not ownership. So if somebody could book a wedding there 365 days a year, that would not be a change in the type, in a nonconforming use. A mere intensification is not a change of a nonconforming use. So if people think they're going to stand up here and say that that property, and I live on Hildre Street, by the way, and I have a house on Jennings Avenue, which is an earshot of this, so I'm affected by it. Okay, but I will tell you, unlike some of the other facilities in the area, that property has always been used as a catering hall for very extensive wedding uses. And by the way, if it were used 365 days of the year for a wedding, that would not be anything other than a continuation of a use. The mere intensification of a use is not. And I'm sorry for stepping on you, Rooney, I apologize. But I've heard it's a clear schism between people with a limited amount of knowledge and people who like my family, myself, 65 years, my parents, my grandparents, been in that neighborhood forever. That's to the extent that it's a catering hall use, that's what it was. And that's, I don't see any change of that. And again, I'm sorry for stepping on you, Rooney, my apologies, sorry.
Thank you.
I want to say one more thing, please.
You used your time, sir.
Well, so does everybody else, everybody else gets to talk.
They didn't, they didn't use their full three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
I, Valerie Ireland, 90 Elm Street. I never talk at things like this. I do invite all of you to come at 4:00 a.m., you know, and if this, just, it, the use is very much of concern to us. I've been coming, I'm 67, I've been coming to Southampton for a long time. My dear friend lived on Bulleye, and we would walk around, and we would come and drink. We never once came to Elm Street to have a nightclub and party like that. So I'm very concerned about this becoming that. I very much love looking at the Polish Club. I think it's a very beautiful building, and I honor it very much. I don't think it's fair, I do not know what's on that, and I want to see that. That's not fair that we didn't see this before. And I would say, I really object to that, and I would like that before there's a ruling. I don't think that's right. But thank you.
Sure, thanks for your comments. Anyone else? The applicant, I just, is there anyone else from the public that's not the applicant or the applicant's attorney that would like to speak? Before we close it, okay.
Yeah, I'm John Roscoe. I'm president of the Polish American Political Club. And I'd like to consider all the neighbors. And I came onto the board wanting to help improve the conditions of the property, both externally and the way it was run. And a small part of improving the property is addressing the ADA compliance. This is one thing we can do right now. The building permit for the interior ADA compliance work is frozen. We can do a ramp. I think it's simple, straightforward, and that's what's before you. And that's all you really need to consider. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Patricia Dwyer, Patricia Sidlacki Dwyer. I'm walking slowly because I just had my second knee replaced. And I would like the additional entrance into the Polish Hall fixed. That's what we're here for, I believe. We're not here for anything else right now. I'd be glad to speak about the other issues when the time comes because my father worked at the Polish Hall for over 30 years, and so did my mother, she was a cook there. And we had, let me tell you, they worked hard, and there was more than a few. There were so many activities at the Polish Hall. And the fellow who just spoke, I just realized I babysat for him when he was two years old. So I've been here a long time.
Mrs. Dwyer, where do you live?
Oh, now I live on Long Springs Road, but I lived on Leighton Avenue. That's where my parents lived.
So you grew up in the neighborhood?
Oh, yeah, I grew up, yeah.
Nice.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mr. Dwyer. I used to play at the Polish Hall. And I just want to make one point that is very accurate. The existing ramp comes up in the kitchen. We used to get there early with our dollies and hand trucks to get the equipment up the ramp. But when it was time to break down after it was over, they wouldn't let us through because we'd be interfering with the kitchen, and we had to carry everything down the side door. So it is not, it's not, the description of the existing ramp coming up into the kitchen is dead accurate. I know because I had to carry things downstairs because they wouldn't let us through when the time came. Just thought you should know that.
Thanks. Oh, sure, come on up. Oh, did you speak already, sir? Oh, I'm sorry, you've already spoken.
I don't think he used his time.
Oh, okay, come on up.
I just want to add that my father was a bartender in the Polish Hall for many years. I don't know, maybe 40 years. I used to work in the Polish Hall at the bowling alley for about three to five years. And I know what they're talking about, but that was not a handicap ramp going into the kitchen because you couldn't get a wheelchair through the hallway to get to the kitchen if they used it that way. But they didn't. The ramp I'm talking about goes into the great room number two. And that was a handicap ramp.
Okay. Thanks again. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to speak? Okay, so I would like to give the applicant and the attorney a chance to respond to any of these concerns.
Hi, my name is Andrea Corey Ali, and I'm the owner of Elegant Affairs. I just wanted to clear a few things up, mostly for the people that are opposed to us opening that. First, I just want to say that when we first came out of the gate, I know that the original plans were very aggressive. And I didn't realize at the time that we would have so much pushback. And after we heard the community that they didn't want us having entertaining outside and that they had concerns about what the building was going to look like and that they wanted things to stay within the architecture that it is now, we heard you, and we understood, and we abided, and we accepted. and we abided, and, and we accept that we cannot have parties outside, and we, we understand that, and we're okay with that. So we abandoned that, and, and a lot has happened since then. We were given a permit by the building department. They said, okay, go to work. We went to work. We spent a lot of money, and right before we were ready to get our final inspection, they stopped us. It was, it's so unethical. It's, it's, it's wrong. But we did do what you said, what you wanted us to do. We heard the people. Right now, if you want to use the word high-end, respectable, I've been doing business in the Hampton for many years. Many charities, many people, they could attest for my, for my work ethic and also my integrity. We have no intention of being a bar or nightclub or having people meander at 4:00 in the morning outside. That's not the kind of operation I run. We wanted to beautify the building for what it is, have events there. We're not even employing a full-time kitchen and staff that goes there. Elegant Affairs hasn't made commentary. We'll be trucking the things in. It's not going to be what you think it's going to be. So we're not the big bad wolf. I, I know that there's been some press back and forth, but at the end of the day, it starts with me and it ends with me. And I, I think that once you see the end product, you're going to be very proud of it, and you have to, you know, I want to be a good neighbor to you, to the police department. I understand that that is a crucial part of succeeding here. So I just wanted to set the record straight, because I think a lot of people have a lot of misconceptions. And, and as far as the ADA goes, it does go in the back, and the bottom line is, is that they cannot, anyone in, in, in a wheelchair cannot be made out to be or feel like a second hand citizen. They have to go through the main entrance. There is no other way to do that except that way, and it is not even on the neighbor's side at all. So that's what we're here to discuss today, and, and that's really it. And thank you for listening to me.
Okay.
Quickly, I want to clear up three things.
Okay.
Number one, that I engaged in some sort of nefarious conduct by getting this plan in and not sharing it with anybody. Got an email here from Jackie Allen at 220 that gave me a copy of something that apparently Mr. Fitzpatrick submitted at 11:41. So we moved quickly to try and get this adjusted so that this would end tonight. So if there's something, some indication that I'm trying to hide the ball, I'm not. We were just able to move nimbly and quickly and get this into the board to clear up any misconceptions. Second point, one of the prior speakers said that this access isn't ADA compliant. I've presented this to the board before, but I want to remind you, this is from Tin Hoseau emailed to me. I've reviewed the ADA access proposed Elegant Affairs at 230 Elm Street. It satisfies both the ADA and building department requirements, and we're only waiting for the planning board approval to issue the required permit. I can resubmit this if you want.
We have it.
Okay. And finally, there was some representation that work to the roof isn't permitted or somehow will end up in an expansion. The roof is falling in in a part of the building, and it has to be repaired. You don't need a building permit to do that, and it won't result in an expansion.
It's an in-kind repair?
Yeah. There's no, there's no expansion anticipated, and if you look at the roof, it's falling in, it needs to be repaired. Finally, I have a, a letter that I received from Christina Dorn, who's at 214 Elm Street, who, she said, I approved this application on the notice et cetera.
Okay.
I have an original. We can see the original.
That, we'll go into the files and maybe you can answer to Kathy.
Okay. Thank you. All right. One thing that I think has come up in the public comments is people are having a hard time understanding the plan, and I would like to take two minutes. Kat, is there a way to get the plan on the screen where I could?
Well, yes, I rebooted.
Okay. I'm going to, I just want to clarify it, just two minutes. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Chairman, you're in charge.
All right.
So...
Just watch the mic.
All right, I think, I just want everybody to see that Elm Street is this line down here, and the area of concern that we're discussing tonight is this square. So ADA compliancy mandates that the pitch or the incline of a ramp is no more than an inch per foot. So what you have here is basically a switchback design with landings so that people can get safely into the building. This is the only area that we're talking about, and you can see that the wheelchair would enter here, come up to a landing, go up another ramp to another landing, and then another ramp and into great room number one. I just want to clarify that. And from what I'm understanding, the old ramp was over here, and you were, in fact, entering the storage room or kitchen. Just want to make sure that people that didn't have a chance to understand it, understand it now. And this is the old plan, right? With the, with the miscalculations? All right, I don't see a reason to review that, but just wanted to give the public a clear picture of what we're talking about.
Thank you, Tony.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Well done, John.
What happened to our speed? There it goes.
Alice. The, the next move would be to close the public hearing. Okay. So if everybody's done speaking, I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on 230 Elm Street.
Can I just ask one clarification? I saw grass. Can you, can you please come up to the microphone? I have to...
I'm sorry. It's just a question. Maybe I can just look at it.
I just saw grass.
Right up on Elm Street.
That?
Yep.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
I did, yes.
Yeah.
Lisa, I think voted over the internet.
Okay, I just, I didn't hear.
Lisa?
Lisa, did you vote?
You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. So we actually have a, a resolution prepared for tonight to bring this matter to a vote, and I'd like to move that we consider this tonight.
A resolution to approve.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if the board does want to consider this resolution tonight, I was, I was going to suggest that I could make a modification to this resolution and add that one of the conditions of approval would be that the planning director sign off on this revised site plan verifying that the identical footprint of the existing brick block and blacktop area as shown on the survey is consistent. And if you want to put that to a vote, I can, can write that one here.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that, I think that's important because that's an issue that people are picking up on, that there's something nefarious going on, and if we can put that condition on the resolution, that would be great.
Okay.
So...
If you can give me a minute?
Yeah, take your time.
Now we put the can briefly.
What was that?
This motion, this resolution was put in the can briefly.
Yes. Do you want to call the motion?
Sure. I'm not sure how to work this. Really, I'm going to come, I'll give it to the old Polish Club.
Okay.
This, this is in the building department. Anybody to see? Nothing else. Change of steps over this stair, right? I feel like they need to reiterate that.
I will, before we...
What's the number?
Yeah, you could have gone too.
What's the number?
They're saying you didn't see it. You've been there.
Well, that's why I will, I will just make it clear.
Yes. No, that's all.
Soon as Alice is ready.
The plan's not dated. We just worked on it.
2182.
So she did stamp it in, Alice, so you can say stamped in?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I... There you go.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Speaker, I just need Alan to be able to project, can you make sure there's nothing over his microphone? It's, is it just me, I cannot hear him at all?
Okay. I'll have to yell at you, Ann. Sorry about that.
Should we clip it to your bowtie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Soon as Alice is ready.
I'm working on it.
I know.
Okay.
Thanks for your patience.
Ann, can you hear me?
It's definitely a struggle to hear you for some reason. I, I don't...
Okay. I, I will move that we pass a, a resolution of the planning board on application number 2182 with respect to Elegant Affairs and the matter of our approving the, its compliance with the settlement that it made on reconstruction or construction of, of an ADA satisfactory ramp. And I make that motion, if I can put one footnote in it, a lady spoke elegantly about the division of things before the board. I've been doing this board by accident for a number of years on a number of applications. There is a pattern in the administration of boards to my history, both as a plaintiff and as a citizen. For, I've been at this for about 55 years, and they do take place in, it's part of the strategy of being a good lawyer, which I was once one. Sometimes it gets broken up, sometimes it doesn't. They do get stretched out. Those of us on the board that have done this for a while are mindful of that regime, the delays, how it gets broken up, how things get settled in, apparently in pieces, and loss of the big picture. I, for one, am really sensitive to it. I think the big picture is crucial. It's crucial for planning. It's crucial for the diversity of citizens that are here that I've known many of for many years. And all I can say is that I, for one, and I think a number of my colleagues, even on this board who are new at it, are also mindful of that continuum. That's my footnote. So, Chairman, I make the motion that we approve it.
You're making a motion that the board...
I'm making a motion that we approve. That we approve the, with the applications before us for number 2182, planning board application number 2182.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I'll second that.
You want a roll call vote? How do you want to do it?
I think a roll call. Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Piazza?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. Bercey?
Aye.
Ms. Cattle?
Um, thank you.
Great. You may, miss. Thank you, everyone.
There's, as, as edited. Thank you, Alice.
Okay, moving right along.
See you later this year.
Okay, this, well, do you mind? Do you mind putting that?
Oh, not at all.
Thank you so much. All right.
Okay, we'll get to see agenda. Yeah, I do. Just getting refocused here.
Okay. We're going to move into the work session portion of the meeting. The first item on our agenda is the request for, a third request for an extension for Hampton's HD LLC 116 North Sea Road. I don't see a reason not, to not grant this, so I'd like to make a motion that we vote, that we grant this extension to a year from now almost.
Yeah, one-year extension to June 2023.
Yep. June 2023. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Auntie Vayner?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Okay, this is, you okay? The next group of applications are subdivision reviews. The first one is 550-554 Hill Street in Captain's Neck Lane. The applicant is requesting an adjournment to June 20th. That would be two meetings from now, three meetings from now. I got, it's...
They are, they are working on it.
Okay.
They are making progress. They've reached out to Gary Gilleski, the DPW.
Okay.
And others, so, yeah.
Okay.
They are working.
All right. I don't see a reason not to grant that application, so I'd like to move that we, I mean...
Excuse me, can I just comment? I just want to make sure.
Sorry, Jeff.
I'm going to try to get everything to you, but some of the stuff's out of my control. One of those involved another agency. So if I'm back here for, I hope I'm not back here for another request in June, but it, it wouldn't be unusual. I'm going to try to get everything done.
I think you need to close that door.
There were a couple of things weren't addressed in your letter, if I just could ask you about that.
What would they be?
That would be, we asked for you to show where the driveway that you are proposing is a shared driveway.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Pull back. Hold on a second. I'm asking for an adjournment so that I can address all the comments in the letter.
In your letter?
No, in your staff report and your engineer's report, so...
Right. I'm not speaking about that. I'm speaking about what we discussed in the board that we wanted to see, and that was affirmed by everybody, where your proposed shared driveway was terminating on property number three.
And we'll, we will respond to that request.
Okay. I just didn't see that in your letter.
Which is why we're asking for an adjournment.
Okay.
Tranquil, it's, Will is just asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had also wanted to see where you were proposing plantings or otherwise cutting off the driveway to Hill Street.
There's a full planting plan by Ara's Design, number one. Number two, the concern about where the driveway terminated was primarily, I remember, your concern that people would use it to gain access to the beach, which is impossible since the driveway, even if it were to go all through one of the lots, terminates at another piece of private property. So, but in any event...
Incorrect. That was not my concern.
Okay.
My concern was that properties generally, under the master plan, are not permitted to have two driveways.
Not permitted to have?
Two driveways. You can't have two driveways.
Who's talking about two driveways?
Well, if you have one, if you're one property and you can get out to Hill Street or you can decide to go through your shared driveway to Captain's Neck...
There's a driveway that will go from, across, a zoning board of appeals approved easement from Captain's Neck into one lot, the other two lots.
And that's the question?
Yeah, well, the other...
Where does the other one that, that originates on Hill Street terminate so that it can't be used?
As a driveway again.
As the last lot in the subdivision.
You have to choose your driveway. Which driveway? Do you want the shared driveway?
What is the concern?
That it doesn't become a cut through, basically.
Oh, it's not shown as such on the, on the plan. There'd be no, the, the easement doesn't contemplate anything other than an easement across the, the property for access to the one other lot.
But are you abandoning the other driveway?
Excuse me?
Are you abandoning the exit to Hill Street? Because properties can't have two driveways under the master plan.
Abandoning, I don't understand what you're saying. Abandoning what?
You, you, you have an exit from property number three to Hill Street.
Why don't you take a map and circle what you're concerned about, and I'd be more than happy to respond to...
Well, I'm right here... Well, I'm right here. We can discuss it. It, it, it's, it's clear that you're not putting barriers...
I'm gonna ask that you act on the adjournment, please, and we'll respond to all the questions, whether or not they were board questions or they were questions from the staff.
Also, we need to receive a filed copy of an easement that's going to run with the property.
That's one of the conditions designed in Board of Appeals. Those conditions will be met prior to any final approval.
No, it's a, it's a condition of this board.
Yeah, but that's, yes, but it's, 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 you will receive that, yes.
Okay, and, and also some barrier that prevents an owner of property number three from exiting through Hill Street.
I'm not gonna prevent a barrier. That would be unsightly. The, the right under the easement will not, will not allow it.
Out to Hill Street, a barrier of trees or otherwise showing on a site plan that you're abandoning the Hill Street exit.
I'll take your comments and your advice, but I have an action on the adjournment.
Can I, can I just ask, um, Mr. Bennett, if you, if you know you're not gonna be ready for the June...
No, I didn't say that. I said I'm trying, I'm gonna try to...
If you could, please give at least a week's notice, because Mr. Blinkoff was calling yesterday not knowing it was on the agenda, so...
Okay, it's interesting, because I spoke to Mr. Blinkoff, and he, his immediate response to me was, I would have absolutely no problem with that, John, of course, you're working this out.
I don't know. I'm just, I just, I, I think it's just fair to have a little bit more time than, you know, the weekend before.
Well, if I don't have, Kathy, you and I have been doing this for twenty, thirty years. If you don't have all the requests, and your, your request had thirteen requests, and your, and your engineer had thirty requests. If you don't have all the requests, and we haven't filed them with you, presumably you're gonna know that I'm gonna ask for an adjournment.
Yes, so I would just ask that you give us a little more time, that's all.
Sure.
Do you, should we just adjourn it more now?
No, I don't think you need to do that.
Kathy?
I mean, we're gonna need two weeks to review it, so if you keep that in mind, when...
Okay.
I will, and if I can't get you that in time...
Well, with that in mind, why don't we just adjourn it to the July meeting, so that there's enough time?
Whatever you want to do. It doesn't really matter to me.
Doesn't that make sense?
If you want to do that, that's fine.
I think that that makes a little more sense, and that gives us a, at least it gives us time to react to what you give, you know, if...
No, I, I, I know, I know what you're saying, Tom. Absolutely. No problem at all.
I do have to see...
Consider my request modified to the, uh, July meeting. I also do want to point out that some of the requests that were made, for example, why I, the, 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 uh, the memo said there would be a referral to Dean McMadam. I didn't see a referral, so I waited. I didn't see a referral. So then, I met with him.
We wait until it's complete, and then we do a referral.
Okay, well, I met with him, we asked...
Plans are incomplete.
I met with him, and we, we talked about it, and he didn't see any problem whatsoever, so...
So you're ahead of the game now.
Excuse me?
So be ahead of the game now, with Dean.
Which is what I'm trying to do. And then, I was very surprised to see a request, uh, for a, a state permit for a curb cut. I mean, I've been doing this forever, and no one ever asks for a state curb cut permit on Hill Street. So that took a little while, uh, to, uh, to, to get off the list. So there, there, there are a lot of items in here, some of which were just not necessary, but we'll try to respond to them as quickly as possible.
When is the July first meeting in July? Because July fourth is on the day.
Well, I was gonna say the July eighteenth meeting, 'cause that week, I just think is kind of...
Whatever you want to do.
I just think that that week before, nobody's gonna, you're not gonna get anything.
That's fine. That's fine.
So, um, let's change this adjournment to the July eighteenth meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Monday, the eighteenth, oh, second, Monday, the second, eighteenth.
All of you here?
Aye.
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 So Alice is out?
Alice is right here. She's trying to figure out...
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the, um, the next issue on the agenda under subdivision review is ninety-nine Sanford LLC. That's on for decision next week.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. 'Cause the public hearing is closed, okay.
Yep.
Just a quick review, the, the, um, six eighty-nine Halsey Neck Lane. Public hearing is scheduled for June sixth. Um, so we can move on to site plan reviews. Why don't we just... Fifty-one Pond Lane is adjourned to July fifth.
Yep.
So that brings us to seventy-one Hill Street. Let's see, application substantially complete, public hearing scheduled for June sixth, okay.
Counsel is here.
I see, yeah.
Good evening, I'm Linda Riley, two thirty-five Hampton Road for the applicant. Um, we got, uh, we received and reviewed as quickly as we could this, uh, memo that we received this afternoon from Kathy Iceman on the submission, or resubmission, or amended submission. A lot, I, I'm not gonna take up your time right now with a lot of the detailed things. Some of the, most of this will address. I mean, there are a lot of things about, uh, various details that have to be shown, and we'll do it. I, uh, and as quickly as possible, we'll do it. On the additional comments, though, there are a few things I wanted to say. The additional comments appear on page three of our five-page memo. Uh, and just a few things I want to say. Under the first additional comment, we've discussed before how the proposed, uh, lot line on the East Philly side is a zero lot line, that it's proposed to be right up against the... And you, you've asked us to reconsider that. We, we have pretty much said we're, we're not inclined to do that for a whole variety of reasons, which I, I think we described. But, so, there's a little backing off here. It, it says it, it may be appropriate to receive an access agreement from the adjacent property owner. Particularly to allow access for construction or maintenance of the building. You know, it's, it's not that we disagree, but the property next door is for sale. It's not gonna be the end user. Whoever owns it now is not gonna be the end user. Uh, we don't know what's going on there. I'm not even sure that we are going to need any kind of use of that property, uh, for the construction. It may be down the road that it's necessary for some maintenance. It may be a good idea for us to get a cross-access easement, just for purposes of maintenance and, and construction. But I think we need to do that at the appropriate time. When the need arises and, or when we, we have some, some indication on who's gonna own it and what's going forward.
So Kathy, is that how something like this is handled, with it, with an access easement? I think, is it one way to handle it?
It's one way to handle it, yes.
Okay. 'Cause I've always wondered, with row houses, how, who, how do they get to the back of the...
Well, they work it out. You work it out.
You work it out?
You work it out. Like, there are a lot of buildings in the Village Business District, which is the Village Business District, where they're right on the lot line, and, you know, you have to work it out. We don't have any right to trespass or, or croach on someone else's property, and we know that. As for point two, uh, which...
Linda, it might be an issue, there's, it, it is my recollection, having used that lot line there for twenty years or so. It falls down, the way it was built years ago, so don't let it go too long. Whoever, because the, the, the property next to you is under real negotiation now, according to the gossip of the villagers.
I understand that.
It's moving fast, and just to get it up to the edge, if you're a contractor, it's gonna, for your client, it's gonna be a real trick to get your thing right to the edge.
Let me be clear. We're not planning on using what used to be an old...
No, no, I know that. No, no, you're gonna have your building go right to the edge of the lot. I understand that, bro. But just to construct it, to drop the building materials right at the edge is gonna be a super construction trick, so don't let it go too long.
Well, I'm gonna leave that to the contractors.
All right, don't let it go too long. Talk to them.
And, and your advice is well taken.
Talk to them.
Okay. Moving on to number two. You, uh, you say that, uh, our relationship would be adjacent Hampton Inn, South Hampton Inn. By the way, the South Hampton Inn is a different owner, different lot, different entity than what we're proposing for seventy-one Hill Street. There are some common, some common interests involved, shall we say, but it's, they're, they are planning to be two separate things. And the one thing that I remember hearing before was about there wasn't gonna be any, that, 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 that there might be check-in at the main part of South, the, what's called the South Hampton Inn.
Right, I remember that, too. I thought, I thought the check-in was gonna happen there.
We're not gonna do that.
Okay, okay.
We're not gonna do that. We're going to have fully automated check-in.
You know, just to interject a little something, I, I was traveling last weekend in Philadelphia and stayed at a boutique hotel. And there was no one there. We had a code. It was kind of nice.
That's the way we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a fully automated check-in. There won't be any employees, uh, on-site except occasional housekeeping. I mean, uh, but, but no concierge, no, and there won't be any need to give out keys or anything like that. So they will remain, and it's a different kind of hotel. It's meant for more extended stays. It's not meant for people who are coming one night for a wedding, or two nights for a wedding. So, I just wanted to say that, and the next thing is that the guest drop-off zone that we are showing on our plan in front of the front of the proposed hotel. Yes, absolutely. We're gonna have to ask the village for permission to, uh, paint it, or, and we, we're going to do that. If they say no, we're not gonna do it. I mean, we won't have a guest drop-off zone. People will have to, you know, carry their luggage from the parking lot.
May I just ask one question on that? Is there any ability to make a small circular driveway there for drop-off of luggage? There's no, it, ruin the plan to do anything other than a...
No, it's not possible, and that's because a number of utility lines, primarily the sewer line, is running right through that front yard. So we can't have driveways on top of sewer lines and other things. But also there isn't enough room, and, uh, also, as it is, because the requirement is, believe it or not, that we, the building can't be more than three feet from the property line. As it is, we, we have to ask for a variance to make it more than three feet from the property line. So...
Okay.
It, it, it is never a good idea to ask for too much from the zoning board if you can do it less, and that's our, our proposal. The parking for, did, number four, your, your, your consideration about requiring parking for residence-only signage for overnight hours in the proposed apartments. We'll, we kind of consider that an operational detail. I don't think it's gonna be necessary because, um, there isn't gonna be really much of, well, I, but we, we'll, we can talk about it, but I don't think it's something that we need to do as part of a site plan approval. Except to the extent that we might require signs to, to implement it. But, um, I, we're not, we, we don't really think it's gonna be necessary.
I, I am a little concerned about the parking for the hotel because they did qualify for the reduction, because it's in the BD district. And, um, I am worried about having, you know, less than one parking space per hotel unit, and less than one space. You're getting, you're getting, um, getting kind of a discount for the parking for, for the, um, the hotel use. So if you have, you know, if it's an extended stay, and you have people come out, and you have two people come and stay in the same unit, um, I'm just a little worried about the overflow from the hotel being in that, um, southern parking lot and those residents not. How great it is, it is something that is an operational issue that you have, you know, these are your tenants. Um, but I just don't want those, um, those folks having to park on the street.
And there are only six residential units there, and there are more spaces than that.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was thinking that you can take six of those spaces and dedicate them overnight at least for resident parking.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that, I mean, that...
We can't approve something that's gonna burden Hill Street or, right?
Yeah. Well...
That we think may burden.
It is likely.
And finally, the la, the last thing that I wanna take your time with tonight is, because it's, it sort of goes to the nub of the matter, is number five, where, where you come up again, this is something we've discussed before, the mechanism for how the, uh, how the workforce housing units are gonna be monitored and everything. We are going to work that out with the Board of Trustees. We see that as something that is part and parcel of the, the, the special exception permit that they granted. They granted a special exception permit for workforce housing and for the hotel. The workforce housing is part and parcel of it, and, um, we're gonna, we're, we have asked for a meeting already. We're gonna work it out with them. We're gonna, you know, but I, I think to have two boards involved in, in reviewing an operational mechanism is a mistake.
But is it fair to say that you'll have that worked out with them before we have to take action on the application?
Probably.
Okay.
Probably, probably. We, we, we know what we want to propose. Uh, there might be some details that have to be worked out. We're gonna stay within the formula of the, of the contract. We are gonna be only one-year leases. They are gonna be year-round leases. They are gonna be, you know, below a hundred and thirty percent of the median income. All of that's, you know, we're, we're obliged to do by law, I mean, well.
Okay.
So, uh, I do think, uh, if, I don't know if my, my clients or the architect wanted to hear, heard, but I think they're in tune. We're already scheduled for a public hearing on June sixth, and we'll be back, and we'll try to have a lot of the details ironed out by then.
Antoinette, are they...
I could ask them if they...
What's her name?
Dee. Dee Dee Godhealth, who's also will be on there.
We are here. They just don't have their hand up.
There you go.
Oh, Dee, just put her hand up now, so do you like to put her in here?
Sure.
She actually, I, I guess she got booted out. Kat, did you see that? She's not there.
I, I did see that.
Yeah, I, she's, she's not there. I don't know. She got booted out somehow. I, I did...
Hope you didn't move.
Okay.
She's gone.
While we're waiting, I have a question for you, uh, the owner.
Not at all.
As I recall, we, we were discussing that the site plan was being considered with the ownership of the South Hampton Inn. Were there any other elements aside from employees and check-in that were considered in connection with the South Hampton Inn, or was it just those two elements?
No, that was it. That was it. It was, it was largely check-in.
Yeah, okay.
It was check-in. It was about, you know, getting your key, you know, get, paying for the room, all of this stuff. It's gonna be fully automated now.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I just wanted to...
Yeah.
I don't have her back, so I don't know if she left or what happened exactly, so if, if that's you, I don't know.
Linda, do you want to call her to see if it was a, a mistake on our end, or if she really doesn't have anything to say, 'cause...
I'll step out of the hall, maybe.
Okay. And is the architect on?
Yes, yeah.
Does he have his hand up?
Just the architect.
Okay.
I don't know if it has...
Is, Antoinette, is his hand up?
Did you see it was on the table?
No, Jack Coogan.
No, Jack Coogan, he's not... Okay, no, he's not on.
Okay. Let's just make sure Dee Dee didn't, and, you know, it wasn't her intention to leave.
Okay.
I'm also gonna send Dee Dee another link in case something happens.
Thanks, Kat.
Thank you, Kat.
You're welcome.
Just waiting to see a Dee Dee.
Can you get the architect?
She, we think she might have gotten kicked out accidentally. Just take another minute.
It's June sixth.
June sixth. Let's see.
She doesn't actually want to come on the Zoom necessarily.
Okay.
But she would like me to clarify that she doesn't think that it should be a condition of site plan approval. Exactly what's worked out with the Board of Trustees in terms of monitoring it. We do have an appointment with the Board of Trustees. We do intend to work it out with them. But her feeling is that's their prerogative.
I think it would either be a condition of approval that there be a mechanism in place, or we would want to see that mechanism in place. Not necessarily that it would be part of.
Not as a condition. Okay. We will, we're working on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Okay. Moving right along. Item number four under Site Plan Review is forty-four Meeting House Lane, Heart of the Hamptons.
South Hampton Shopping Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Number three, Southampton Shopping Center, one-eleven Main Street. We're still waiting for information on this, right? It's not complete.
Yeah, we haven't received that yet.
Okay. Alright. So now we'll move to Heart of the Hamptons, forty-four Meeting House Lane. Pending receipt and review of additional materials. Okay, I think the applicant is here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's Linda.
It's Linda. Busy person tonight.
Small town.
So, yeah, once done, Linda Riley, two thirty-five Hampton Road. We submitted just last week some new plans, some revised plans, three pages of revised plans as well as some other things. And received a memo this afternoon from Kathy Eiseman. There are some, there are some things I wanna respond to there. And there are some things that we'll give you. The existing generator is supposed to be removed, and it says that on the plans. And we have no plans for another generator. There's no plan, and I said to Molly, they're gonna wanna know what happens if the power goes out and all that food in the walk-in, you know, is there. And she said, we give away the food in the walk-in. We give it away twice a week. It's gonna be, you know, it's, they don't plan to have a generator, so. And the proposed signage is shown. There's a sign shown now up on the building, in the front, between where the garage base used to be, and that's our proposed signage. I mean, we understand that, you know, we also have to go to A R B with some of these things. But that signage that is on the revised plans is what we're proposing. Also, there was some, something in Kathy's report about our right to use the church parking lot. We submitted all the leases that go back into nineteen fifty-four with the church. It's been continuously leased by the village expressly for the purpose of public access. So it's always been used for public access since nineteen fifty-four, probably before then, but nobody felt the need to document it until then. And also, but since fifty-four continuously, whenever that lease expires, it gets renewed. Village pays for it. The village pays thirty-six thousand dollars a year for it, and I imagine the church is happy to get it. It is for public access. That's what the village leases it for. It, just as the people across the street, the historical museum is gonna continue to exist and continue to have visitors, continue to have fairs, even if for some unforeseen, unforeseeable reason, that parking lot is no longer open to anyone except parishioners. And it should be the same for us. I mean, it is a public access parking lot. There's no reason to think it's ever going to not be used by all the surrounding community. And we think it should be left at that. The traffic, the parking, the circulation are all things that were reviewed extensively by the Board of Trustees when they granted the special exception permit for this use on this lot. Very specific use and very specific lot when they granted this special permit. And it's only the Board of Trustees that has the authority, well, under the code and under law, to approve the use. Part of approving the use was a lot of consideration about traffic and about circulation and about parking. And in fact, those are the major concerns that we've heard from objections, the people in the neighborhood who opposed it.
Well, I wanna go on the record that it's a major concern of the chairman of this board as well, and I haven't, unless I've missed something, I haven't seen a real satisfactory explanation. I didn't attend those meetings, so, and I'm not sure, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure how we fit into this whole process.
Well, I'm not, that's a good question.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good question because of this, because the use having been granted by the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees having granted the permit, it is now deemed a permitted use. I mean, once a special permit is granted, it is a permitted use. And the part and parcel of their consideration was the traffic study, the village's own traffic study that the village commissioned. And whether you like it or not, it's the village's own traffic study. The same thing with the planning report. They had a planning report that considered in detail, done by the same planning firm, Nelson Pope and Warhees, considered these issues of traffic and circulation and parking extensively. And they came to the conclusion, in adopting a negative declaration and in adopting a resolution granting the special permit, that the proposed use would not have an adverse impact, and this is a quote, "on traffic or parking conditions in the local area." Now, you may disagree with that, possibly. Anybody could disagree with anything. But I'm not sure it's within your purview to deny a special, to deny a site plan based on considerations that have already been thoroughly vetted in the process of granting the special exception permit. Because the things you're raising have to do with the use, and how are you going to manage the cars and all that. We think that we've demonstrated how we're going to control the use, and we've submitted a narrative. And I think, other than, you know, possibly a few more details, that's really what we owe you. And you're, I think you're hard-put to deny an application based on some general theory that what we've submitted and what the village has accepted as, you know, is enough.
I mean, my concern with reviewing the lease of the church is that the prior church that was home to the food pantry decided that that was no longer, you know, desirable for them to have their, for whatever, I don't know what.
Not because of the parking lot, but because they wanted the space.
Yeah, right, but my question is because the church has the right then later on to come back and say, you know, we need the parking lot this weekend for a church activity, or we don't like what the use that's going on because it's too much. They, under that lease, have a right to, you know, claim the right this weekend or this week, you know, that it's not gonna be available.
I think that's all stuff that the Village Board of Trustees considered, and I think it's, well, these are, and the Village Board of Trustees, as I understand, continues to want to see this happen. And want to, I think this is all part and parcel of what's already been looked at. I don't think what you're talking about is gonna happen. If it does, it's going to have huge impact on, as I said, the historical museum. You know, what happens to those ways? What happens to that fair?
Well, is the church supportive of this use?
Yes.
And how is this, how is these classified?
Yes, oh, yes. Yeah, before the Board of Trustees, the Their trustees are
Willa is new to the board, and she deserves to ask, she deserves the right to ask these questions. She's only been on the board for a couple of months. I'm referring more to your comment.
If you wanna give time, can you just come up and introduce yourself, please?
Let me let Molly address this.
Thank you. I think, let her come to.
Hi, I'm Molly Bishop, lifelong resident of Southampton Village and executive director of Heart of the Hamptons. The current pastor, or the now-leaving pastor, has written letters on behalf and has spoken publicly at Village Board of Trustee hearings in support with the blessing of her full Board of Trustees. Several members of the Board of Trustees of the Southampton Presbyterian Church are former board members of Heart of the Hamptons and very much want to see us move over to that location. And very much agree that even if they don't wanna make an arrangement with the village, that they would still make an arrangement with us to use it. They allow us to do our toy distribution every year at Christmas in their parade room, and we have all of our clients come there for a week before Christmas. We partner with them on many different activities all throughout the year, and so they are very excited to see us move next door. We've also had Tom Edmonds from the Southampton History Museum come and speak on our behalf and write letters on our behalf as well. And he looks forward to being able to do joint programming. I've spoken to them about how they work out funerals and weddings with the church, and they say they just share their calendar and they accommodate each other. And, I mean, we're certainly used to doing that at Sacred Hearts when there's a funeral or a wedding. We just, you know, do our best to make accommodations for each other. I would also say that our lease is up at Sacred Hearts Church, and their ministry has expanded quite significantly. And they do need those classroom spaces. They were able before to sort of overuse a space that they legally leased to somebody else to run their religious ed program, but the tenant doesn't wanna make that space available to them to do that anymore. And so we had to move out of about half of the basement that we used to occupy. Where now, like, our ladies' room doubles as our ladies' room, our lunch room, our clothing room, our storage room, our toy storage room. And then we have one little stall that we can use for the ladies' room. So we've had to move, you know, more things into everywhere that we can to accommodate them as best we can, but it's still not allowing them to run their religious ed program that they've had for probably over a hundred years. And we've been very good tenants there. We're very accommodating, and we would be the same at forty-four Meeting House, nineteen-two, with the church and the history museum. So I know some of the opposition has tried to make a lot of noise about how we would use the parking lot. The way that we handle things now is we have volunteers and staff stationed all throughout the outside space when our clients arrive. They follow our verbal cues. I know you talked something about signage. We don't think that that's necessary. You know, we have volunteers stationed to kind of keep things moving if somebody needs to pull out. I mean, right now, we share a parking lot with a full-time school that operates year-round that has nearly fifty employees and sixty-five students, special needs students. There's six buses that come in the morning and come in the afternoon. There's several parents that come for pickups. So, I mean, we're used to having to, you know, kind of deal on the fly. You know, there was also a lot of comparisons and trying to make it sound like we have a lot more people on site than maybe we do. We don't have a huge queue of cars. Cars come, they only stay on-site for less than a minute, and then they leave, so the cars don't get backed up. Maybe only for the first, like, five minutes. Sometimes people wanna be the first one in line. And then as soon as we open, that's gone. So we know we can accommodate that in the parking lot at the church.
So, you know, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask this question after what Linda said, but I'm going to ask it.
Sure.
How is it gonna work? Are people going to pick up their parcels from the ambulance barn and walk on the sidewalk to their car?
No, so we would propose to run it as a drive-through. Right now, what we do is we prepack bags. So, much like the COVID testing, but even like maybe closer to the building. So we would have the prepacked grocery bags outside, and then the cars would pull in. They would come up, like, parallel to the building, give their name. We check them in. We put the bags in their car. They pull out and they leave. And the way we operate at Hill Street, because it doesn't have a turning lane just the same as Meeting House Lane does, is that our clients all know they can only enter the parking lot if they make a right. If we see somebody make a left, we pull them aside when they do it, and we tell them, don't ever do that again. Next time, you have to turn around and come only in from the right. So we would do the same thing. We'd have our clients enter only making a right. They'd pull around the parking lot, and then they could pull out. It would take less than a minute.
So why is the church parking lot even in play?
Because it's a longer turnaround. It has a turnaround. It has a turning lane. It has, you know, a loading area right in front of our building.
One of your clients would park behind the church.
They don't have to park. They just stay in the car.
But then leave the parking lot, come into the parking lot of Heart of the Hamptons.
No, no.
So that's my question. How are you gonna cross the two property lines?
So the grass area is our property, right?
Right.
And it's pretty much the same as like with the COVID testing. They are inside the building, but then when somebody pulls up, somebody comes out, they swab them, they go back inside, they test it, then the person leaves. So we would have the grocery bags on our parking lot. We'd have one of our volunteers by the green grass there where the door is. And then they would give their names through the car window, and then the bags would go in, and then they would pull out. And there's plenty of space there for a car to also still pass on the inside lane.
Okay.
Cause that's what they've been doing with the COVID testing.
Okay, so the clients are not actually going to enter the parking lot of the
No.
Okay, so the operation is dependent on that parking lot, the church's parking lot for its operation?
I mean, it's not that it's dependent on it.
It is. How else would it work? How else would you?
Well, we could tell our clients to just find a public parking spot and come, and we could give them an appointment to come, and we could tell them, this is when you can come, and then, you know, they would just have to walk up to our building. That would be fine. And in fact, it used to be that way years ago before so many people were in such dire economic situation that, you know, we had so many residents in the village that really depended on us. It was that you could come, you could shop for your food, you could leave. We only had maybe thirty clients that came a week. And we would love to someday be back to that, and people didn't need us as much. And right now, we're in still sort of a public health crisis where people really cannot afford food, and
Understood.
You know?
I guess, is there any concern for liability if something I guess, are, are, is there any concern for liability if something happens on church property?
We have the full support of the church.
As a result of, I know you have the full support of the church, but what about the liability?
We would also have liability insurance that I guess would maybe name them as additionally insured. I mean, you know, uh, but we have, you know, we have extensive liability insurance ourselves now.
Okay.
The, the village also has it, at least.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I suggest, Kat, do you have the ability to show the plans?
I do, right now, so it doesn't crash again.
Molly, do you want to just explain that again? And maybe if you want to just put the plan plot on the table facing the board and just show how the circulation would work and where, where your employees would stand? And just put it facing the board?
Oh, facing you guys. Can you guys even see this?
No, they're, she's going to put it on the screen.
And then I'll go up on the screen and then maybe you can just, you can, I mean, there's arrows that show the circulation, but maybe it's best for everyone if you do that.
I, I really appreciate this. I know that you've done it a hundred times and you did it for-
I know, and to us, it's like, oh, this is so easy.
For the trustees, but I'm, I don't have a full-
I mean, I have to say too, that I've only been in this job for a year. We've sort of changed our distribution sometimes, like three times, to accommodate, you know, different things. And our clients are so accommodating. If we ask them, "Oh, we want you to park this week because there's something going on." They did the roof, they did a ramp, we've had many, many funerals. And each time, we just, we make it work. It is never, ever an issue.
Okay.
So, so-
Just turn it around a hundred and eighty degrees.
A hundred and eighty degrees of the test. So, um, okay, Alice, so... I'm disoriented now. Okay, no, so, ca- this is Meeting House Lane. This is South Main and into Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
We would instruct our clients that they could only enter the parking lot by making a right from M- Main Street Job's Lane.
Yep.
And then they would come down to the far side of the parking lot. If you notice ever, all of these spots along the back row are always empty. I mean, and so, they would come around this way. And then here, along the side of the building is actually a loading area and several ambulance, ambulance vehicles used to park there when it was an active ambulance. So, they would come here and then they would leave out of the parking lot and, and then there's two, two exits from the parking lot, really. And we would have volunteers, we would have a volunteer right here at the entrance from Meeting House Lane. We would have another one here at the exit. Um, and then we would have other ones stationed throughout. And then we usually have four or five volunteers right at check-in that help, you know, take people's names and give them the groceries.
And this is during your scheduled pickup times?
Only during the pickup lanes.
Yeah, okay.
So, they're not even getting out of the car?
Right, thanks. I, I didn't understand that part of the question.
I mean, ideally, we would love for fewer people to need our services and they could get out of the car and come shop for their family. But that would only be if we got back down to like a very low number of families that we were servicing because i- it, it's too time-consuming. We, you know, we, we need to make it as, as easy for our clients also and for us and for everyone in the, in the neighborhood. You know, that's, that's what we're used to doing. I don't, uh, do you have any other questions or?
I, I have a question for council. I, so back to Linda's point. So, it's a site plan review.
I think also, um-
Why?
Charlene is on the, um, Zoom to speak maybe about what has already happened at the village board of trustees, if you, um-
And Mr. Chairman, if this question's in the process, I can also answer whether that's helpful.
Okay.
Just one more question on the, um, refrigerator, the freezer.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, going to be attached to the building, proposed to be attached to the outside of the building?
It was originally, um, but then the adjacent neighbor, uh, had a lot of objections to that. It was, it was, it was too close to her property line. When we looked into it further, um, we realized we didn't have enough of a setback there and, um, she was opposed to that. So, we did move it, um, in consultation with the building inspector, um, to the backyard. We are also looking into the possibility of moving, like, you can have a, the unit there and the compressor someplace else. So, for us, the unit works best there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the compressor needs to be. And so, we've been doing a lot of research into, um, there's, uh, some water cooling compressors um, that might be able to be within the attic space or there are plenty of remote compressors that you could attach to the west side roof.
The water-cooled ones are qu- much quieter, too.
That, that would, I know, that would be amazing. So, we, um-
They cost more, but they're quiet.
Yeah.
But it's outside because of space or?
It's outside because of space. Um, we're very limited on the, on the space. Um, and, um, and so, yeah, we couldn't accommodate it inside. We have been try- we've tried to be accommodating on where we place it outside and certainly are continuing to want to be accommodating on where we place the compressor and what, uh, we can put around it, um, to, to hide it.
Okay, so back to my question. And I think maybe like-
Uh, yeah, so, uh, uh, Linda certainly makes a good point that the use has been approved already by the board of trustees and that is in part what this board often does during site plan review is, is consider the site plan standards in connection with the use. Um, and of course, one of, one of the big ones that we usually consider and I think we would normally have considered in this instance is the interior circulation and parking. And, and right in that standard, it says to satisfy the parking needs of the proposed use on-site.
I think, I think that's my issue is that it straddles two properties. And so, we're not really looking at one site plan. The, the use straddles two properties and we're not looking at a site plan review for just the property that you guys would be leasing from.
But I would say the historical museum cannot operate without the use of that parking lot, you know?
Understood, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand this process. I'm also asking these questions for the public so that-
Sure.
-there's a very clear understanding of what's going on.
This, this board has considered in the past, um, site plans that use adjoining properties and we have asked them to demonstrate that they can legally use other properties for access or parking. And they've done that here.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, overall, the board does need to consider the, the overall objectives of site plan procedure review, uh, public health, safety, welfare, comfort and convenience of the public in general, the residents in the immediate neighborhood. You know, tho- those are things that, that the board should, uh, opine on.
Alice, let me ask you a terrible question. I've lived with this one and a half times. I have a huge conflict of interest. I s- directly steered so far about sixty thousand dollars to Molly to offer all this stuff.
Alan, if you're suggesting that you have a conflict of interest, I'm going to recommend that you recuse yourself.
No, I may have because I steered money to the, I've been to the Heart of the Hamptons for approximately twelve years for all sorts of things. Children's clothing, food, I, I know it's a-
For the record, I just, I just want to clarify-
I know it's op- okay, I know it's operation intimately. I don't think our board has any say in that. Linda was a hun- maybe ninety-nine percent right. The board of trustees made a decision, which is their decision. Does our law require them, when they do something that involves land, for us to make a site plan determination?
Well, the, the board of trustees is not requiring that we have site plan review. The building inspector is requiring site plan review.
Is that kosher or not? Can he do, if the board of trustees makes their decision?
I'm not going to opine on, on whether or not the building's-
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry to be, be wrong-footing you.
He, he has-
But if the board of trustees decides to take village property, do a lease and apply a, a thing that they have, isn't that their business? And what business do we have? I don't, I don't think we have any business in this, myself.
If, if it helps to clarify, this would be the same procedure as if it were a special exception before the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, who handles many special exception uses. Once that board approves this use as an approved use, it would come to this board for site plan review based on those, um, site plan review standards that Alice mentioned, which are separate and apart from the special exception use standards that either the Board of Zoning Appeals or in this case, the board of trustees would consider in allowing that use.
Okay, so it's, it's in the law that the board can delegate this to us because this happened before with the parish museum, with the artist colony. It happened with a great controversy. Boards turned down doing a review on the ambulance barn until council said, "Well, you kind of owe the board of trustees the favor." And that went down to the various, various issues that we're struggling with. We can just say, "The board of trustees, you made a bad decision." Or "You made an uneven decision." Or "You made a decision that would be problems." But that's not our business. I'm just concerned that we're getting into something that's the board of trustees' business.
Yeah, but it's, I think, three people have made it very clear that it's a site plan review that we, by law, have to-
No, I, I'm trying to find if it's by law.
Well, our, our council just said that it is.
I will say once again that this board did not determine its own restrictions. When someone applies for a building permit and the building inspector says that it requires site plan review, we come across this board and this, this board grants or denies that.
And, and let me make this point.
And because this is a special exception use, it does necessitate site plan review, um, per the code. As all special exception uses do.
If, if the building inspector puts us on it, if that's the way it works, I understand it.
Okay.
If that's what the law says, done.
And can we just clarify for the record that you were saying that you have aided in getting donations for Heart of the Hamptons? You are not saying that you have any pecuniary interest in Heart of the Hamptons?
No, I have zero interest, my, zero, zero direct or indirect interest myself. But I might be the person in this room, except maybe for Molly, that's most familiar with what they've done every day for twelve years.
Thank you. And I just, I, I want to be clear on the record because I understand what you're saying, but there are members of the public that may not understand and I think it's, it's important that we be clear about-
I've just filed my financial form with the village and they can check it out.
Oh, good reminder.
Should we hear from Charlene?
I'm here.
Is your hand up?
I put my hand up.
Thanks, Charlene. Um, what would I like to say?
Well, I would just like to say that the, the board of trustees, um, had, had made their determination. Um, they're very supportive of this application. Uh, we have had several meetings, uh, with both the village staff, Ms. Riley and, um, Ms. Bishop to discuss process. We wanted to make sure that we were on board with all the required process. Um, the last meeting that we did have via Zoom, we did bring Tin Soho, our, our senior building inspector, into the meeting and it was his recommendation that we do need site plan and that is why we are here. So, not we, but, you know, the village actually is the owner, so I guess we're the co-applicant. So, um, you know, we wanted to make sure that all the information, uh, that the board, uh, the planning board requires has been submitted. Um, we have done, uh, you know, secured and, um, and, and received a, a traffic study, which I believe, um, you, you all have copies of. And, um, Nelson Pope and Voorhees did conduct their, um, their full environmental, uh, assessment. So, uh, and that, that's the information that the village board did use. There were some questions. Um, there was a lot of, you know, comment from the public. But at the end of the day, um, they felt that, uh, it, the use itself wasn't much different in activity and, um, operation as the existing, um, uh, COVID testing. In fact, there was probably a lot more, uh, expanded hours regarding the COVID testing during the height of our pandemic than, um, the village, uh, than Heart of the Hamptons would have because they do have a very specified narrow, uh, window of time and operation. They've made many, many concessions on their original plan to comply because they do want to be a good neighbor. And, um, the village is very supportive of this application. We just wanted to, on that behalf, on their behalf.
Thank you. Very helpful. Okay, um, any other questions from the board members?
So, I guess I, are you doing garage doors? Can someone answer that on the front or is it going to be regular doors? And do garage doors have any, um, you know, difficulty in terms of being airtight or like-
Let me show you the full-size plans.
letting things in since there's going to be food there? I'm asking that because we have mice in the garage.
I think maybe you want to see the full-size plan. It-
Yeah, I, I looked at, I just, I couldn't tell. I, at some point, there was a discussion about having garage doors in the front.
There's one garage door proposed in the front.
Okay.
Okay, there's, it, it's, it's on, it's on the plans on various pa- pages, but there's one garage door, one garage bay that will be left for, and it will have garage doors on it. The other one will be bricked over with, uh, a narrow, high window that is shown here.
No personnel doors on the front?
No, no, no personnel doors on the front, except, I don't know, you, I think we walk through the garage doors, I guess.
There's one just on the side.
There's one right on the side.
Okay.
Of the, right in the front, toward the front, on the side, there's an entrance.
But are garage doors as like, you know, you can put a brush or what's that called? On the bottom of a regular door, but can a garage door be, you know, such that it doesn't let anything come in or? You know what I mean?
Excuse me, Chair, I do have the architect's hand up. I don't know if you want me to let him-
Yes, you can take them in. But that is the plan because the way we receive deliveries, uh, the, the deliveries get unloaded in just one single pallet and then an electric pallet loader drives it. Um, right now, we have to load it box by box down into the basement, but the plan would be that we could just open the garage door and load the whole pallet in with the pallet loader and that would take less than, you know, four minutes, probably. Um, so we did want to keep one garage door, but then to try to keep it so that, um, we maybe have some area, you know, something underneath-
Just the gist of my question is, is like, is a garage door, you know, as airtight as a door?
Absolutely.
And should there be some consideration of having maybe a door, you know, that you could still have boxes go through, but that nothing else could get through? If you're keeping food there, that was my question.
We've thought about having internal doors that are like two double doors inside that so that there's like a loading area and then you go into the room.
So, it's like secure from anything?
Yes, because we do do, um, you know, like weekly pest checks just to make sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about, yeah.
Um, because we're in a basement too, but, um, we've never had it.
Yeah.
And how do you see the delivery trucks getting-
The delivery trucks would utilize that same loading area that's right along our side of the building. Um, I mean, our side, yeah, uh, the side of the building along the church parking lot.
So, they would be backing in or backing out?
No, they would just pull through the same way like our clients would. They would just pull right through. They could drop the pallet right there and then drive it over the sidewalk into the garage bay and then it's done. It's out of the sight of anybody. Uh, we would then be able to unload the pallet inside and the truck would be long gone. Um, so, I mean, right now, in our deliveries, the truck is only on-site for, like I said, less than five minutes. Yeah.
Lisa, I just want to make sure-
I think Ben might want to, um-
Okay, I just want to-
Oh, yeah.
Um, Lisa, I just want to make sure you've had a chance to, I keep forgetting you're up there.
Oh, she's muted again.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm, I'm hearing everything, I'm fine, thank you, thank you.
All right, if, if we move too quickly, just raise your hand.
Got it.
All right. Um, no, this is not a public hearing. This is a work session. Um, architect.
Ben, did you want to comment? Your hand went back down. Okay, hold on one second. Okay, here he comes. Okay, Ben, if you can unmute yourself and put your camera on, that would be great, please.
Good evening, everyone. I was a little, uh, delayed there, but I was offering to share my screen if it was helpful graphically for what you were talking about. But I suppose, um, we've moved on from that already. But I could, if you're, actually, can I? Would it be helpful to see the site plan in, in a higher resolution on your screen or?
Yes, just for two minutes. I would like to see a full-size site plan mainly for the space between the road and the ambulance barn.
Oh, okay, so, we were talking about the doors might be easier to see in that elevation rendering. But as far as the site plan goes- I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, which part did you want to see in particular?
I, I just was wondering what the, how much space there is between the front of the, between the garage door and the street, the sidewalk.
That is about 50 feet to the property line, actually, and then another, more than 50 feet, shall we say that?
Okay. And do we, do we know the exact conditions to the west between the parking, the church parking lot and the parking lot of the ambulance barn property? Like, is there a curbing?
It's various. I think grass has grown over it in some places, but there's limited curb towards the south and just end edge of blacktop towards the north.
No, that, I mean, north of the building. What's the, what are the conditions between, right there?
Yeah, there's a proper curb that extends all the way to the street and then turns and goes west on the west side. And I think there are just wheel stops. No, there's actually a concrete curb on the east side of the existing five spaces as well.
And what about the east side of the church parking lot? What's the boundary there? Do you know?
That's what I was saying. It, it sort of blends or goes from asphalt into grass in this section, and then the southern half, let's say of the building, it's, there is some sort of curb.
Are there any plans to make that a little easier to traverse with packages for people?
It feels so intimate because it's just us here.
Well, this is a work session.
I know, I know.
This is how they used to be.
So, there is a sidewalk there and-
A sidewalk, where?
Like in the back of the building, so the south part of the building, along the east side of the building, there is sidewalk space there, and it does have like, what do you call, like the little handicap dip there to go into the backyard. And then in the front, it's the same thing. It's a sidewalk that is flat to the parking lot. And then the grass area is sort of flat to the parking lot also. So, um-
So, there's a piece of sidewalk between the Presbyterian parking lot and?
In the back.
Only in the back though.
So, what about a pick-up and drop-off point? I, I mean, pick-up point or drop-off point? Where, what's that surface?
It's grass.
It's grass, okay.
And then as far as the truck, I'm sorry, the truck dropping off?
Would, we would take it over that sidewalk.
Oh, there is a-
There's an existing sidewalk there.
In the back?
In the front.
In the front. There is a sidewalk in the front. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That connects the two. And even, you know, the church had said they'd be willing to explore and talk to the village about opening that up, that instead of having it be grass, have it be an extension of the parking lot, but then-
Let's leave it grass.
Yeah, we never really, you know, it was just nice to know that.
Well, that's a good picture right there.
Yeah, see?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so there's a, there's a gap between the grass and the building.
Yeah, that's all just parking lots.
And that's where you'll walk-
And sidewalks, yeah.
Great. I was just thinking from a safety point of view that it's not a tripping hazard or-
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do want to put some shrubbery and stuff there to make it look nice, but not impede the access.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's it.
I just wanted to address one or two more items too that were in today's report that we received. I think Linda addressed everything about the generator, that that's going away. And then as far as the proposed dumpster location goes, we're showing it on the west of the building as, as discussed, or go a little larger here. On the west of the building, there is only about just under six feet of property from, from, I'll switch to the first blow plan, if you can. Can you see this now in enlarged plan, hopefully?
Yes.
Right. So, as far as the exact dumpster, that wasn't quite determined yet, other than, I think Molly had spoken with the church about using the same company that they use, so that it would happen at the same time. It could be front-loading like this one is shown, that would, this is shown as a five-foot by six-foot wide dumpster that would fit within the enclosure. So, the enclosure would be, you know, just about the exact 5.8 feet that we have. It would be six-foot-high fence-like material, as is mentioned in the code, where it mentions stockade fence or similar. The exact material, we haven't quite decided on yet, but I would imagine the ARB would review that as well.
I'm sorry, so we're looking at the west side of the building? Okay, the garbage is going to be accessed from the church parking lot as well?
Right. So, we're trying to make it easy for the, for the garbage company, but again, as Molly has mentioned many times, there is incredibly little waste generated by this outfit. It's, it's really cardboard and, and, and that's about it. The, the food is all distributed. It's not thrown away. So, all they need is a small dumpster, and they want to make it easy on the site. But the actual material, you know, some sort, I've mentioned that it would be some sort of, excuse me here, vertical boards. I don't know exactly what those materials would be yet. We haven't quite reached that. I didn't think that we needed to do that for the planning board purposes, but we can-
The idea would be something white, wood-looking, maybe better than wood, so it doesn't rot. But maybe, you know, like we said, we could discuss that with the ARB, but certainly something traditional. But the, also, the location of the dumpster was at the request of three neighbors on the other side that didn't want to hear the garbage truck. We had originally proposed to have the dumpster in our own parking lot, but the neighbor across the street and the neighbor just adjacent asked if it could be on the other side. And so, we did try to accommodate that, and we have made arrangements to have an account with Norsec, the same company that the church uses, to come and pick up on this, okay? So, it's no additional, you know, traffic or noise in the neighborhood.
And Ben, to clarify, you're also showing an exterior door adjacent to the dumpster. And it looks like a new sidewalk landing there on that side of the building. I'm sorry, could you say that one more time? I'm sorry, on that side of the building, it looks like you're showing an exterior door. You should have a little bit of a sidewalk landing facing the parking lot. Right, so actually, we're, we had, maybe we want to revise this now, but back in, when we first submitted to the ARB, we had shown, so the existing door, if I can, sorry, if I need to reorient you here. This is the front of the building to the right and the west of the building at the top. So, I had planned for swapping out an existing window, door number 14 here, for a door, and removing the existing door here, which is towards the core northwest corner of the building. That was when we were talking about a much more, well, a slightly different use of the building, where the clients would actually come in, and again, as Molly said, they're hoping to transition back to this. But it was to remove the, to, to set the door further back from the street for, largely for the privacy of the, of their clients. So, there's just one person door, if you will, on the west side of the building. It's just relocated southerly from its existing location. And we're also talking about adding one door, again, in an existing window opening, door number 10 here. Door number nine exists in that location. But to provide a little bit better access and a little bit better flow, we were, we were proposing swapping out a window for a door here at the southwest corner. Did that address your question? Yes, that may go. I just wanted to point out, so there's a, there is a little bit of a sidewalk there connecting the door to the, to the parking lot. Yes, this, thank you, Alex, for pointing that out. This, the roughly number seven-shaped piece of sidewalk here would be added. That does not, this does not exist now. So, to, this is the end of the existing sidewalk, and we would connect to that to provide proper sidewalk around, excuse me, around the building. And you're also showing some sidewalk at, where it's door number 14? Uh, right, a new, a new landing there. Right, and then on the, on the east side of the building as well, this is an existing window, again, using all the existing openings, but inserting a door in that existing window opening to provide better access to the walk-in. And door number three is existing. I think, maybe Linda could remind me if there was something else I was supposed to address.
He's shaking her head.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your repeating yourselves, but I have a very thorough understanding now of how it's going to work, so.
There are a couple of things in the memo that, that, you know, could be updated now that we have more understanding, that there aren't going to be any brown signs. It's just a sign on the building, so that comes away. The, the description about the landscape surveyor, that was something my staff, you know, they didn't see the need to notice, so that goes away. And then the ADA parking spaces shown, so I think that, there is, I mean, technically, the calculations result in fractions, so they're supposed to round up to the next full number. And if we don't think this stuff up, no, of course, we have to do the math. So, technically, six parking spaces are required. And, but otherwise, I think most of the questions that I had raised have been answered. Just briefly on the number of parking spaces, which by the way are intended to use for staff. I think that question was in there too. It, it's for staff parking, and there is a handicap space there. But also in terms of the formula, your, your, your memo, your memo refers to 11614B, which is the, you know, where the parking formulas are found in the code for parking spaces. There is no, nothing in there for food pantry. There is no formula. So, in, in some ways, 11614 doesn't apply, because there is no formula that applies to food pantries. And so, we did the best we could, because you asked for a parking calculation, to pick the thing that was closest to it and, and give you basically an approximation, based on what office space is. It's by understanding that storage space, and that's what the first floor is, really, just storage area, isn't counted. And that's, that's where we came up with basically five spaces.
Wouldn't a common sense approach be ask how many employees you have that are going to need to park on a daily basis?
Well, they're only, they're, they're probably not more than three.
Four and one fourth.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's what it is. So-
But on distribution days, it'll expand considerably to volunteers. Like, you talked about six volunteers on distribution days, right? Okay. And they would park in the-
Three of them live in the neighborhood. They'll make the walk.
Not in February, but, but you, they would just park in the church parking lot?
They'd park wherever they want.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I could point out one thing about the parking. One of the special use criteria specific to food pantry does spell out there should be a minimum of five parking spaces available. So, that's where the parking requirement comes from. It's in a little bit of a different part of the code than the typical use breakdown.
Okay, I didn't, there was a little bit of chatter in the audience. I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. I just wanted to clarify, the special exception criteria specific to food pantry does regulate the number of parking spaces, and it says there shall be a minimum of five parking spaces available on the parcel. So, it's in a little bit of a different part of the code than the traditional parking space requirement.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Any other questions?
Well, you said you were considering the double doors, so, which I think is a good idea. So, you know, if we could see a rendering of that at some point, or a-
I guess, yeah, we could do that. I mean, it'd only be interior. It wouldn't be exterior, so I don't know that, if we-
I just think for this use, it's part of the design that when you, you know, when you open the garage doors, I, it's, for this particular use, it seems like, I just think it's a good idea. So, if you're, if you're considering already-
I think it's a good idea too. I, I had it myself, but I didn't talk to Ben.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just wondering where, where we, where you are with considering that, and,
Yeah.
You know, I don't, if, if they're doing deliveries and, you know, when that is open, you would have an ability to close those doors, I think. You know, I'm not sure technically that is the exterior or not the exterior, but-
It would definitely be interior, because we want to leave the garage doors, and we want to make it so that it, we had doors wide enough that we could load things inside. But where exactly inside we place them, that they could have enough room to open and, and stuff like that, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Ben.
Be good for the winter too, because opening that garage door would just-
That's true.
You'd lose every ounce of heat in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we work in a basement now, so we are freezing. We wear coats all day and gloves.
All right, I guess, I, I don't have any more questions, do you guys? And all of the memo issues have been met, so I'm not sure what the next step is. I'm still learning the process here, so.
You would either schedule a public hearing or waive a public hearing.
Okay. In this instance, being that there are some concerned neighbors, I would like to schedule a public hearing. So, when's the, soonest we could?
June 20th would be the earliest, I believe, because you need 21 days at least for the noticing requirements.
Okay.
I want to, you, you can, you can waive a public hearing, and I want to ask you to do that. I mean, to deem the application complete, we've, we've heard from, we've got 37 pages submitted this week, I think, from opposition, that they're very clear on what, what their objections are. But I, I don't think a traffic hearing, excuse me, I don't think a public hearing is, is required, and I think you should waive it, just because it's been through so many public hearings already. And everyone's been heard from.
They've been heard from at the village trustee level and written.
Correct.
Okay. Is it okay?
You're the chair.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm very seriously considering waiving a public hearing, considering this, so I'll give you two minutes to speak your-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McFarlane will say, I believe, but he will, for the Board of Trustees, when the question was asked about traffic access, Mayor Jesse Warren said, "That is a matter for the planning board to decide." The statute, the village code, says one of the criteria you ought to consider in approving or not approving site plan is traffic access. Mr. Schneider, a professional traffic engineer, has said point-blank, "You-" Mr. Schneider, a professional traffic engineer, has said point blank, you cannot use the church parking lot simultaneously to accommodate the queuing of automobiles and, and the general use by the public. He also says that the actual barn, which it's depicted, well, you, you know, the front, the front area of the barn. They, they're saying they want to have five spaces available for its employees. Mr. Schneider says you cannot have a delivery truck go into that barn, in, in, into that parking lot, the barn parking lot, I should say, and, and at the same time have the, have those, those cars. What are you going to do? Is, is, as the, as the truck comes in unannounced, you're not going to have to go and hunt?
They just explained earlier that the trucks are coming into the church parking lot.
But he also says, by the way, and Mr. Schneider also says that the church parking lot cannot also accommodate the delivery of, cannot accommodate the delivery of trucks. By the way, the next thing I'd like to discuss is the lease. The lease specifically says that the property, the lot, is to be remain available for the public. Mr. Schneider says you cannot have simultaneous use by the public while at the same time have the use by the pantry. May I say something else also very important? There is no site, not, no site control. The representations made today, let's presume they're all in good faith. One minute after this board and the village formally and finally approves this site plan, it's this site plan, the heart of the Hamptons or its successor can turn around and like, and change the use five days a week, seven days a week, essentially during all business hours. May I say that the representations that were made in the plan that was submitted on Friday, the applicant says, we only intend to use the barn for operational purposes Wednesdays and Fridays. That's not, that's a verbal representation. When that was said earlier at the last planning board, they, the, the applicant repudiated something like that. They said, no, 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 we're not going to, we're not bound by something like this. We're not required to do, we're not required to do that. By the way, the palette, the references were made to the Basilica. Gee, we're operating it just like the Basilica. No, the Basilica church, church lot, how it's configured is entirely different. Its size of its parking lot is different. By the way, they already have an indoor refrigerator in the church Basilica's, Basilica property, which is much smaller than the barn. Why do you need even a refrigerator on the outside when it could be accommodated on the inside? But more, more importantly, the church park, the Basilica's lot is designed to accommodate and can accommodate this kind of traffic flow. What about COVID? Representations were made, well, gee, we've been using this property for COVID. No, there's a world of difference between COVID testing, which is done by appointment, and all you need is a small Volkswagen to deliver a syringes to the building. There, and then, and then, and then people line up on appointments. You cannot. It is, it is a lack of candor. It's a lack of honesty, I might.
Well, I, I think that these issues should have been brought up to the village trustees because what's before us at this point now isn't, is an approved special exception in just like ADA ramps in Mount Street. We have a site plan in front of us.
I ask, I invite the board to look at the minutes that took place at the Board of Trustees. This precise point was raised. Precise, Mr. McFarlane was there. He can correct me if he, if he please, as this is right. The precise point was made and the board said this is a matter of, for the planning board. And the village code says traffic circulation is a matter for the.
You're referring to the parking. You're referring to the parking?
The parking, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm talking about the parking.
Mr. Borovina, do you have the date of that Board of Trustees meeting?
April, I believe April the 14th, I believe. So you have, you have the, the, I'm talking about the traffic circulation plan. Mr. Schneider says you, that circulation plan simply does not work. And by the way, how are you going to have volunteers? How are you going to shut down the church parking lot to accommodate the queuing of cars when, and simply on the basis of volunteers coming in? And doing that and exposing the village to li, exposing the village to liability. By the way, may I say one other thing too? There's not a scintilla of evidence in this record. When they, when they, when the applicant refers to a traffic study, the only traffic study, only, only traffic study they did by an engineer was with respect to Meeting House Lane and the number of cars that goes, goes from one end to the other. Period. End of debate. They do not, not a scintilla.
Thank you for your comments and you've been heard.
I, yours, yes, sir. I request that in part a public hearing be held because there's many other things, a lot of things were said today, but I think the public has a right to know and to have it addressed and aired and for the board to consider. So I request that the public hearing be held. And may I say, instead of June 20th, it could be at the following, it could be at the following meeting rather than June 20th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for this opportunity.
Okay.
I have a question for Molly or Linda or, how many parking spots are in the Presbyterian?
I forget now, but we did estimate it that, I counted, there's 12 more spots at the Presbyterian Church than what we have at Basilica. And then I also mentioned before, there's over 50 full-time teachers that park their cars in the lot that we share. There's very few spots that are actually open during the day when we are open because of the teachers and the buses that are there.
Right. I was just going to say, for, for my experience, that parking lot is not overused in any respect.
Oh, at the Presbyterian Church? No, it's largely empty. One of our board members parks there every day and works at UBS. And like I said, that whole back south row is almost always empty. And we used it at Christmas. Like I said, we had our clients coming for longer hours that week to pick out toys and we had no issues. And the only reason that we would like some flexibility, like Mr. Borovina mentioned, we intend to be open Wednesday and Friday. But we also understand that Friday maybe is not great in the neighborhood or maybe is not great for our clients. I mean, we certainly do have more clients that come on Wednesday than come on Friday. And maybe in the future, we're going to offer Wednesday and Thursday. We don't intend to be open, you know, seven days a week. It's just that if, it seems like this isn't really working. Let's, let's change and let's go with Thursday or let's go Tuesday, Wednesday. We think that as professionals, that we should be able to make that determination to make it work as best as possible, not that we're trying to expand in any way.
Can I say something?
No, thank, no. I'm sorry, but we've, we've, we're saturated with, with, with the issues. So I, I just wanted to open the, the public hearing issue up to the board and get your opinions.
Yeah, I'm inclined to have a public hearing, just because I think of, you know, it's not in a residential neighborhood, but it's bordering a residential neighborhood. And I feel that the impacts on the neighbors, that they should have a voice. And, you know, it should be something that the applicant, you know, there, there should, hears as well. And the applicant seems over, open to being collaborative and responsive and we should have a public hearing. But I was going to also ask Alice to go over what the criteria for waiving a public hearing would be and.
And I would be inclined to agree with you, except that this has been publicly heard through the Board of Trustees.
Well, well, the use has been heard by the Board of Trustees. This is the site plan and there are site changes that, that impact the site plan criteria. I, I certainly don't want the board to think that I have indicated to you tonight that you do not have the ability to review and apply these standards. You, you certainly do.
All right, then.
And the, you know, whether or not you want to waive a public hearing, well, it's, it's up to you. It's really at the board's discretion. If you think that there is public interest in an application, obviously there's public interest here and that input from the public is valuable, then we should hear it.
Okay. So let's, let's stick with the, the public hearing. I think.
June 20th?
Yeah, I, I would like to.
Could I please, one minute?
Certainly. Yep. What are you speaking on? What are you?
On this public hearing.
Okay.
I've attended.
Can you identify yourself?
Lane Brett Schneider. I live in the village since 1979. I'm on Lewis Street and Meeting House Lane. I have spoke, been at every one of the meetings in reference to Heart of the Hamptons. It is a nonprofit group that has two hours a week, two days a week. We have heard the same arguments. I wish I had taped this man and I would play it for you. Having another public, a public hearing is just taking everybody's time to hear the exact same arguments and just holding the heart of the Hamptons up from moving in to take care of the, I don't know how many people they're taking care of right now. I understand it's the lowest number that it's been in a long time. But you can't keep listening to the same exact arguments. They just want to whittle them down.
I, I understand, but it's, it's a diligence issue for, for me. And I think for the rest of the board, it's, it could, it could be problematic in the future if we don't.
It's going to be the same three people again.
Well, as well, we've received letters saying that some neighbors were just became aware of it. Were not aware of it previously. So I don't know, you know, what the notice requirements are. I'm sure they've been met, but some people were not aware of it. So those people who are not aware of it should have a chance to have their opinions heard.
Everyone will know about it. Everyone does know.
I mean, I take them at their word as that they didn't know about.
Listen, we, we can't, this is devolving. This, this is a work session. This is for the board to discuss this application with the applicant.
So Alice, in the, in the interest of expediency, a, after that public hearing is closed, what can we do that evening?
Same thing we did tonight.
Okay.
But I would, I would want to be sure that the record is complete and that you've had ample time to review it. We've got another work session in between then and now. We can discuss this application again at that work session.
We could pull that off, right?
And make sure that we, we have all the information that we need in order to adopt a resolution.
Okay. I, I know it's disappointing, but I, I want to have the public hearing.
I understand. I mean, I think you're going to be disappointed to have to sit there and listen to the site plan over and over again.
We've done it before and we'll do it again.
Yep. So I'd like to move that we schedule the public hearing for Heart of the Hamptons, 44 Meeting House Lane for our June 20th meeting, which will give us ample time for notice and to review the outstanding items.
And I'll second it. Hi.
Hi.
I request, could we just on the following week?
No. That puts us into a holiday week that's never good. Great. You know, they're not on here, but there are two approved minutes. That, I mean, they're, they're, they've been vetted and I think we should approve them tonight because by.
Chairman.
Alex?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, before we move on, I just wanted to, to say that the answer to the question that was raised is there are 85 parking spaces on the adjoining.
Oh, thank you, Alex. Thank you. Thank you. I was going to say 50, 85. All right. Thank you.
No problem. And just as a reminder that there will be an application for this in front of the architectural review board for the design of the building. And there may also be a public hearing for that as well.
One of the best kept secrets in the village is about to be exposed. Let me just check here the dates.
Fine, fine. 59, 85. I'm not quibbling. It's more than 50.
People, people, let's move forward. I'd like to move that we approve the, the April 18th and May 2nd meetings, meeting minutes that have been reviewed by Alan and revised. All in favor? I mean, can I get a second?
Second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Nothing to discuss for new business.
I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll third it. And this is the longest meeting we've ever had in history since I've been on the board.
Oh, Aver?
Aye.
Yes, aye, aye, aye.